allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Here is Sandy in the, oh by golly, she is.
Can you hear us, Sandy? Can't hear anything?
We'll take a moment for technical difficulties while I call a meeting to order.
Should be fine.
Our mics are all on here down here. Can we call her?
Well, hopefully, we can get this.
Can you hear us now?
Now, I can.
Ah, there we go. All right, we'll recall meeting to order. We're looking for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I will make that motion.
Did we, uh, put committee reports down at the bottom?
Oh, don't know why that wasn't on there, but yeah, sure good.
Okay, with the addition of committee reports.
I'll second Bruce's amendment with the committee reports.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes? The minutes from last week's meeting.
They look good. They all look good to me. I think they look good proof.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Minutes approved. Uh, general public concerns. Seeing and hearing none, we will move forward with, uh, Ben and his, uh, agenda items.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Ben.
The first item that I have on the agenda is a continuation from last week with the, uh, ABL quotes that we had got. Last week, I guess during our conversation, we determined that One Step was the, uh, cheapest of the four options that I had gotten, as well as no annual contract, no cost for equipment. They basically posed the, uh, least amount of, of risk, uh, as far as the products that are out there that are offered. Um, I do need to sit down and have a conversation with them and figure out how many of each type of unit we need. Cause they do have the, the ones that just plug into the dash on the pickups. And I believe the dump trucks, but then like the motor graders will need to be hardwired in. But to account and figure out how many.
What do they plug into?
Uh, what is it? The, uh, OEM, uh, port.
Oh, down below.
Down below.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then you can buy, for like seven bucks, you can buy the Y splitters. So that you still have an OEM, excuse me, an OEM port available.
Okay.
I like the all of the hardware wired.
We can do that too.
I can get some like.
Well, with most of these, uh, most of these companies, the way they are now, if they get unplugged, they send an alert to my phone. Or to my email, let it know.
Okay.
Well, just on my, like on my truck with the, I have my, for my electric tarp motor, and then I have a splitter for my phone. And it sits right by my knee. And I don't know how many times I've broke that because it sits by my knee and it, I get in and out of it, so I would agree with Dave, but if it's wired, then you don't have to worry about being the, and for what level it's gonna cost, I guess I would tend to go that way.
Okay. Lowest one ever around a trade off next year or coming.
Right.
Which you can pull them and put them on another unit afterwards.
Yeah.
But I think that getting it started at the roughly the five fifty, um, where can be able to see what it does and if we wanna do something higher or better.
Yeah.
The next year or two, at least it gets us started.
It gets us started and there's not really much of a financial risk because you can cancel at any time. And you get your deposit back, which is one month, uh, when you ship the equipment back.
Oh.
So the, the tracking part of, we have a motor patrol that goes out towards just north, west, east, whatever. And someone said, well, I haven't had anybody by there. How long will that stay in?
Three years.
It'll stay in a year?
I can, I can look, I can look back for three years on that, which, which was one of the big pluses. Verizon is only ninety days. Uh, Samsara and US Cellular both have three year capability. As well as One Step, where you can look back and what they call it is breadcrumbs. Where it'll ping somewhere between every, uh, two and sixty seconds. Depending on whether the vehicle is moving, every time it turns, it'll ping. But if, if you're talking like a motor grader that's moving five miles an hour, it might slow, it automatically would slow the, the ping rate down. But you can follow those breadcrumbs and look back.
Yeah.
For three years.
At least we know that, yeah, it was great last month. You may not have been able to by your house, but it was, and it was.
Of course.
The snow patrol was by there.
Joe Smith called and said, nobody's come by and moved snow all, you know, all week since the storm. We can look back and say, well, we had so great to go by on Monday, Tuesday, and he's half a mile away from you today.
Right. I like that.
Or your snow walked up my mailbox and, well, actually, we had nobody go down that road for three days, so it wasn't us. You know, things like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve that if, do you wanna, or do you wanna check and see what the difference is, hardwiring them?
Uh, it's the same price.
Same price. I'll make a motion to approve that quote from One Step.
I'll second that. Sandy got it.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes? Approved. Now, we have the, uh, application and permit for the stonewall trail grooming within Humboldt County Secondary Roads Right of Way.
Yeah, this is the same permit that we did last year, which allows some on the north and east side of the trails, uh, of our county roads. We didn't have any problems last year. These guys are great to work with. Uh, they've got Tom's cell phone number. And if there's any issue, Tom has yours.
He has my number.
He's got your number, so if, if there's any issue, they just call each other and get it figured out.
I thought we'd requested no snow this winter.
Requested it, but.
We requested it, but I don't know if we're gonna give it.
Come on, Shane, we don't really need that.
No.
You got one or two days to do it, and that'd be good.
I'm not in the mood yet, but. And we've got, uh, we've got their updated certificate of liability insurance, um, so.
This, I take it's essentially the grooming, trail grooming.
You're correct, yeah.
All right.
We didn't have any issues on T twenty last year with, really either side.
Nope.
We, we didn't have any issues. I never got any phone calls by the way, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the application for permit for stonewall. Trail grooming within Humboldt County Secondary Roads Right of Way.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Carrie? Got that.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Um, all righty then. Um, we need to approve the certificate of completion and final acceptance of work for the project. Read the number, uh, with me flashing beacons.
Yeah, so if you guys have been south or east of town, you've seen that we've got the three flashing beacons installed. Uh, on top of Alberdeen Hill, on the corner going to Badger and on the Eagle Corner. Those are our highest accident rate intersections that are not DOT intersections. We applied for a grant and were approved last year. With the funding not becoming available until July first of this year. We ordered and have paid for the three beacons. Uh, we installed them about three weeks ago, I believe. And this is the statement of completion for the DOT so that we can get reimbursed.
What's the life on the solar? Do they last?
They're supposed to last quite a while. There is a battery in there. I believe the batteries have a five year shelf life. We'll have to replace those every five years. The, the whole setup is about a thousand dollars a year.
I guess I'd just remind people that, that are out there that see them every day, that most of us don't drive them. If they don't blink, you'll have to let somebody know so that.
Absolutely.
Cause if you're out there, see them.
You can see them way, way.
Yeah, they are now.
Yeah. It is nice.
You got very many comments from people there?
Uh, only like two or three, really. Um, just positive that, you know, that it really shines at night and they can see it coming from a long ways away.
Yeah. It does get your attention.
Mm-hmm.
But I know, uh, a number of years ago, I can't remember if it was Harold Truss, who, whose wife was driving that route and almost got in an accident. We had a constituent over in the eastern part of the county that his wife or daughter was nearly, I mean, hurt bad at that intersection. So hopefully this shines, you know, and is highly visible even in fog or in, in, uh, non-ideal conditions.
Right.
Yeah. Weather kind, fog.
I would make that motion to approve the completion and final acceptance for the project LTSF CO forty-six. Seventy-five, seventy-four, seventy-four, sixty.
Awesome. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Foes? Carrie? Think I say that. Okay, Ben, do you have anything else other than what's here?
We have, uh, PCI moving equipment in. I talked to, uh, their semi truck driver Friday as he was unloading the dozer, or, uh, I'm sorry, excavator. Um, he said that they would be here late today or first thing tomorrow. They'd be finishing the one up. Salvo, Badger, and then moving up to do ours. Uh, the anticipated construction for ours is two weeks. I know that's right during harvest, but the one that was there was pretty narrow.
Yeah.
So this should be.
And it shouldn't cause too much hassle, or so.
All the route is out around it.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's just gonna be anybody that's got crops out there that's trying to get north to Iowa.
Yeah.
Uh, I had three or four conversations with Bruce Hefte last Friday. They're still trying to get their ducks in a row with, uh, filing this petition for a hearing with, uh, with Peggy. Uh, I talked to Brett Legbold as well. Uh, I don't know where they have it, to be honest.
You know, it appears that they just don't have the procedural part of that, correct?
Well, they, they want us to basically hand them a blank check. They don't wanna do everything that that Iowa drainage law code says that they have to do, uh, to receive full funding. That's kinda where we're at right now.
They basically want the county to pay for the crossing, but they don't wanna go through the steps that require the county to pay for the crossing.
Right. But we've got our current policy right now, uh, the one that we just adapted, that says that, uh, paved roads have to be bored under and the county will reimburse fifty percent of the cost up to fifteen thousand. I thought maybe by adding that increased value that that would entice these guys to just go the quick route. But obviously, they're, they're still shooting for the full dollar figure. Which to do that, they have to bring in everything that's listed in forty-six, six hundred, which includes an engineer's evaluation. Uh, a number, the number of acres that are supposed to be drafted, training that way. The size of the pipe that they're looking at running, uh, the slope, I mean, basically the, the set of plans, not just something drawn on a map. And then at that point, they have to bring all that information into Peggy, apply for a hearing. Peggy sends out copies to you guys as the board, me, the county attorney, and I believe the NRCS office. And then we're allowed however many weeks to review it and evaluate it before the hearing date. And then on the hearing date, we can sit down and, and we can still say that we see no benefit to, to county or secondary roads and deny payment. I mean, we have that option. Or we can say, yes, we feel like this is gonna help the county in, in some way, and we're willing to pay X number of dollars towards it. I mean, it doesn't get, doing all of these steps doesn't guarantee that they're gonna get full payment. It just gives them, it just gives them the option to possibly get all payment.
So. I, I thought after they went through all the steps.
It doesn't guarantee.
It doesn't.
You guys can decide, you know what, you guys are putting it through a high part of the roadway. This isn't even the lowest part, so if we put intakes in, we're still not gonna get any positive drainage for the secondary road system. I don't see why we should be paying for any of this.
Amazing.
Well, but regardless, to get the entire payment made, you, they have to.
They have to go through.
They have to go through this.
Right.
And typically, I think it's that, yeah, that reason it's in the, the code is that, yes, the county and or state, or whosever road it happens to be, you know, oftentimes does pay, but this is showing reason that they need to do it. But that's.
But it's basically, they can, if they go through the steps, they can do it. It still doesn't say who's actually paying for it, but it does give them the right to do it.
Yes. I mean, they, they have to provide the, the necessary information, not even material. But like I said, I talked to Bruce three or four times. I talked to, uh, the group's attorney. I talked to their contractor. It sounds like he's already out there starting to dig. I don't know how this is gonna end up going.
Well, but all these folks have a copy of the code that spells out, which we've got a copy of. This is what.
Paper copy and they've gotten emails to them.
This is what steps need to be taken if it's gonna be all in the county. Otherwise, uh, boring portion would, you, basically, the county would pay seventy-five hundred dollars.
Uh, the county would pay fifteen thousand.
Fifteen.
Oh, I thought it was fifty percent up.
Fifty percent up to fifteen thousand.
Oh, would pay fifteen thousand.
Pay maximum.
In that case, they don't have to go through these steps.
No.
Right.
They can say, we wanna put, and say, fine, as long as they get the working the right way permit, no, go ahead.
Right.
They pay fifteen thousand.
It could cost thirty thousand to bore underneath the highway.
But, okay.
It would cost their group.
Okay, they'll pay fifty percent up to fifty. But isn't it still in that, we just did this, I know. It doesn't say fifty percent up to fifteen thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So our cap.
Is fifteen thousand.
Would be fifteen thousand if they went that route.
Right. And then they all.
If they go through the hearing, it could be whatever the cost for boring.
Right. But they can get up to fifteen thousand with no hearing.
With no hearing.
Yeah. Then they could do it tomorrow.
My understanding with the last conversation that I had with Bruce is they haven't had an engineer evaluate any of this. I mean, they did have the engineer, uh, basically show how much drainage is gonna be heading this direction. But they don't have like an engineered set of plans that we'll get a copy of, you know, something for the money that we're paying. And that they're asking us to pay, that we can put on file and, and, and save for later. I don't believe that they've had anybody do that.
Doesn't appear so, because it seems like if they would have, this would have all went through the proper procedure already, if that's what they wanted to do.
Okay.
Good. Thanks, Ben.
That's all I have.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm just snooping. The other morning, I went to my truck, and the Hitachi's sitting up at MS with one of the back, I can't tell which is the forward and which is the rear, backside of it.
So we got.
Two tires off.
We got the rest of our new tires, uh, last week from MS, and I don't know if you've driven by our county shop, the.
That's why I thought it's sitting there for the weekend.
Uh, they didn't get a set of lugs completely tightened. As we pulled into the shop on Friday, one of the tires went rolling past the excavator and slammed into one of our garage doors.
Nice.
MS came out, apologized emphatically, um, and they're supposed to be getting new lug nuts and the tires put back on today, so.
I just seen it sitting out there in the morning, and I thought, whoa, getting our tires put on.
I seen that too, and I thought, well, they must be just showing off their new tires or something.
And then when I come into town Friday afternoon, here, and sitting in the middle of our lot with outrigged out and sitting up in the air, and I'm thinking, now we're missing tires.
Yeah, it happened, uh, I think it was just before lunch on Friday.
Oh, mercy. Well.
Did it damage our garage door too?
There's black scuff marks on the tire, but.
Good.
Luckily, it slowed down.
And that's fix, it's, uh, tire, we all in this case, needs to just be put back on.
They just need to put back on. From the looks of things, none of the actual lugs that are sticking out are, are damaged.
Oh, good.
Well, luckily, we got into the yard.
Yeah.
It didn't go down the road. These new pickup sort of vehicles sitting in order.
Or hitting a, a passerby going in that direction, if it would've happened on Highway three.
That would've been bad.
I didn't know that happened. I just figured, well, we had, we drove it from somewhere to, and we had a flat tire again, so.
I didn't know.
Off through a tire.
No. We did have one size tire that, that was, uh, the wrong size I got shipped. Instead of a, uh, ten two thousand, it was an eleven two thousand, so.
Well.
Got that.
That explains the.
Ran down, so.
Yeah. Put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine. Yeah, that happened on, Friday was like another Monday. Uh, it, it was quite a bit going on. But yeah, we're plugging away. Uh, Dave and I got a bunch of, uh, surveying and whatnot to do this week. Get some section corners tied out, uh, for next year's paving. We got Gash Park left to do and Overlook Pioneer, a couple of miles left to do, but.
I guess my other question would be, and, and I don't wanna throw a bunch of work at you, but I just was curious, have we got any more, um, crossings that we could use those rail car?
The rail cars?
As opposed to, and just, and save us some money with our own labor?
I've got some scheduled in, in the five-year plan for us. Um, I don't think there's any left for this season. Next year, I think I have two.
Well, that's what I was wondering, coming up if we had.
Yeah, we can sit down with it. I know, uh, I, I think on our five-year plan right now, I've got like four or five that I was looking at doing with, with local construction. Two short bridges, one in Avery, one in Wakusta Township that can both be replaced with, uh, half culverts. They come with a.
Bottom in them.
With a bottom in them, and basically two welded hook points on the top, and then you get like CID's crane to come in and lift them, set them in place. We're gonna try and get a bunch of surveys done right now on, on creek crossings, cause there's no water running through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have ideal working conditions.
Look at locations that we can use them. Um, off the top of my head, I can think of another four that we can add to the five-year construction plan that we can do with local forces. I think our out-of-pocket expense on that one, on one sixty was like forty, forty-five thousand. That includes labor and everything.
Yep.
Yeah.
But our, our actual expenditure was like twenty, twenty-five, somewhere in there, so. I mean, we can get them done relatively cheap when we're going with local forces.
Yeah.
Especially if we don't have to rent a crane like that on one.
Yeah.
Well, I just thought, wondered if we had anything in the next year or so, if we move or if we do it ourselves, it saves us the.
Yeah, so.
Yep. Definitely a good thought, and you're on it.
We're, we're doing, uh, bridge repair work right now. Uh, the county crews are. We, every two years, we get an inspection list, uh, with possible repair work that needs to be done, and we're going with that list right now in the county shops. And I have to go out and do bridge cross-sectioning for the, our bridge inspector, for our bridge inspectors that are coming in in November to do that.
So our Goshen stuff's been.
We got two crossbows that have been ordered and they're scheduling delivery.
They've been bringing salt over to Clarion here, so I figured that they'd be moving it pretty soon.
Yeah, I sent the email last Monday, I believe.
I can't think of that time of year.
I know. Luckily, all of our bunkers are full right now. So the floor that we're getting is basically going into storage.
Storage.
Until.
Till we need it.
Hopefully, next summer.
Yeah, next summer, yeah. No snow.
Good.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Guessing we need to wait until nine o'clock for John, or? Okay, well, and, uh.
Do we get into drainage, so we're ready for it, or, cause we got also, we got that.
I see that. Either that, or we can do our committee reports real quick.
Do that too, if this, well, I had no committee reports.
All right, with you, Peggy, if we just run through the short committee report? Rick had none.
I had, on the twenty-ninth, Tuesday night at, uh, Zoom meeting with Edmo. All normal there. There's John right there.
Oh, yeah. By golly, there he is.
Two minutes to go.
Yep. Sandy, got anything?
Yes, uh, Wednesday, the thirtieth, uh, I got on the national COVID, uh, nineteen recent call on the White House, and it was very interesting. They had Deborah Rex on it, and they also had, um, uh, Dr. Fauci on there. And, uh, again, uh, Dr. Rex said, you know, the course of the same path, uh, with the, uh, virus is positive. He digital, vigilant on the same path. Uh, Dr. Fauci talked all about the vaccine and the process. And he just wanted to reassure everybody that the vaccine is going through the proper channels and not in, in salt. The proper channels are all independent, um, doctors. Uh, they're ha, have no political ties. They have no ties to companies. Uh, so they're following a proper procedures. They're just getting put to the top of the list where most other, uh, medicines, things like that, that they're testing, you know, or like the first in, first out type thing. Anything to do with COVID is put at the top of the list. That's where the, the age is coming into play, but all of the other proper procedures are, you know, you know, as follows. We just want everybody to realize that this thing. Uh, on October first, we had, um, a Zoom meeting with Rowan Hill, uh, with their board. Uh, it was kind of a question and answer type thing. Uh, they're still not gonna do their, uh, voting, uh, whether to, to, uh, accept us into their mental health agents. That'll be on, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. Uh, this was all informational. They just wanted to ask those questions, uh, on services, what our expectations are. Uh, we got a sheet, uh, as far as, uh, the site. The one thing that will not be covered is bringing entries with, with, um, uh, Rowan Hill. But there isn't that many regions that do bring entries, so it isn't like, uh, it went to another, had that all. Yes, that's one of the, um, innovators, um, that, uh, they covered for that. So, uh, that was about an hour and a half of just going back and forth with their, uh, drivers, who goes to that government board. That's it.
Okay. I have the end meeting group planned. We're under budget so far this year.
What date was that?
Sorry.
Anything else, Dave? Just to be.
That's it.
I did not have any extracurricular meetings last week.
Okay, how much more should we go on drainage?
Sorry?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls in drainage? Thanks for joining us in person today, God.
Yeah.
Happy to be here. We're happy that we're on time.
Yeah. We're getting better.
On a tight ship.
Yeah.
We even had a quick LAC meeting.
We did.
Okay, um, couple of things I'll talk about briefly. Um, you know, I, I think you probably all are aware that we, uh, made some pretty significant changes in our annual meeting this year. Talked about this with our board of directors, uh, a week and a half ago. And, um, you know, we did go out with the political membership, but that was largely not much, not much response there and, and the response I did get was all over the board. Some people saying cancel, some people saying postpone, some people saying hold the meeting and really didn't provide much direction, but, in the end, I, I think the, the board felt and I agreed that, um, until we start to see an end inside of, of where we are now with, with COVID nineteen, that we'd be better off, um, holding a, a small meeting. IDDA bylaws actually didn't give us a whole lot of option. Because the bylaws provide that we have to hold an annual meeting under one. And secondly, state law, a government's nonprofit corporation says that you cannot meet electronically unless your bylaws specifically permit it. And ours don't. So, we're in a position of having to hold a meeting that is not electronic, which we're. So the decision of the board was that we're just gonna, we're gonna hold a meeting, but it's only our business meeting. And that way we can transact the business of the association, uh, get our officers in place for next year. Get our legislative program, you know, approved for next year. The other things that usually take place in that one hour, half hour, one hour time segment before we start the, the information presentation. So it'll just be a business meeting this year. Uh, we're not gonna have any presentations. We're not going to have a noon meal. It'll be at the same facility as the Starlight and Ford Dodge. We anticipate it will be probably a forty-five minute to one hour meeting. And, uh, move on from there. And, uh, certainly the hope is that when we get into, uh, twenty twenty-one, that we can get back on schedule and come back, as per usual, with a better and better meeting. So, um, any questions about that? Talk about the legislature a little bit and, uh, what we're potentially anticipating for next year. I just had a conversation with our legal counsel this morning who actually, who, who sort of, uh, backs up our, our lobbying effort. And, uh, I think some of you may remember that in the legislature this year, we did have a brief attempt made to, uh, change the, um, percentage number on remonstrance. The end result of that, of that was, I think they figured out, uh, they being the legislators, that it's a little bit more than they wanted to take on. And, but, you know, that's really sort of a no-win. I mean, you're gonna have to have some percentage. Right now it's seventy percent. Somebody's always gonna be on the wrong side of that and somebody's gonna always be on the right side of that. If you change that to fifty, if you change that to sixty, you're gonna have the same scenario. And, you know, the legislative history of that number, I'm, you know, we're looking into that, but that seventy percent is probably about a hundred years old. It's put there for a reason. So I, I don't think that we're going to see that come back in the legislature next year. Don't quote me on that.
They got, uh, probably a period, well, they, they got a lot of screwed up stuff going there too with all this COVID. They're gonna have to maybe not put any more on their plate than they want. John, at point of clarification, with remonstrance today, when you say seventy percent? That means what exactly?
Seventy percent of the property.
Yeah, so seventy percent is a.
Opposed.
To, to file a remonstrance, you have seventy percent of the property in the district have to, has to be represented in remonstrance.
Seventy percent, so it's by acres?
Yes.
Doesn't have to do with, it's just strictly acres?
Right.
So seventy percent of the acres, whether it's one landowner.
There's a population part of that too.
There is?
Yes. I think it's seventy and fifty. You gotta have fifty percent numbers-wise and seventy percent of the acres.
Fifty percent of the landowners, seventy percent of the acres.
Seventy percent of the acres, yes.
Correct?
Yes. That's right.
And that will stop the project.
Yeah. And I, I think what precipitated that, I'm not sure of that, but I, I think what precipitated that, that there was a project in another county, where it became very controversial. And, uh, there was a landowner who owned most of the property and he wanted to get this improvement done. And he was, um, pretty well off and didn't really care about how much it cost. And wanted to get this project pushed through and there were some other landowners that were not as financially well off, that didn't wanna see the project go. But the big landowner who was in favor of it had enough land that he could stop the remonstrance. Well, and you're always gonna have scenarios like that. I mean, that's unfortunately the nature of the beast. And, you know, a typical legislative, you know, reaction to that is, well, let's just change the numbers then. And that's, um, you know, sort of a sharp sided approach. And like I said, I hope and think that we won't see that come back up. The other piece of legislation that we came very close on, um, but in the end didn't see five back. This House Bill twenty-five fifty-two. And that did two things. First of all, it related to, um, publication information when you're doing a classification or reclassification. And this was actually a proposal that came to us from the R H clerks. And the concern was that when you go through this classification and classification process, you have to, there's requirements for, for publishing that. And, you know, the clerks were pointing out that, you know, the land, you know, forces cost are passed on to the landlords. The landlords are paying thousands of dollars for information they've already received. And it's just, it affects the double taxation on them. So let's change those requirements so that we make sure the landlord has the information they need and, and ensure the landlord can get the information they want on what's going on with classification and classification, but not necessarily having to publish that in the newspaper. That was the first thing it did. Second thing it did was related to the threshold that exists, um, before you need an engineer's report. This was something that was supported by our board of directors and it raised, um, the threshold for that to a hundred, to what's called competitive bid threshold. And that competitive bid threshold is set by, uh, set administratively, it's not set by the legislature, it's set administratively. And that's currently at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So it raised the threshold that exists in terms of when you would have to have an engineer's report on the project. Doesn't mean you can still get one on, on a lower amount. That certainly doesn't conclude that. But it does give you more flexibility in terms of when that would be necessary and required by law. So that bill did both those things. We got the bill passed the House. I think it was ninety-seven to nothing, ninety-eight to nothing. Everything was sailing along. Ready for a vote in the Senate, early March. We've been assured by Senate leadership that the bill will go. Governors' offices were good. And then COVID hit. And legislature went home. Did not come back into session till mid-June. And, um, at that point, of course, um, they're back in session. They're two weeks away from the start of the fiscal year. They don't have the budget yet. And so obviously their first priority when they came back in the session was, was to finalize the budget. And that took, I'd say eighty percent of the time. Outside of that, there were very, very few policy bills that were taken up. And I call ours a policy bill because it didn't have an appropriation in it. And we worked by and get leadership to take the bill up. We had several state senators, uh, who were working on our behalf and went to leadership and requested that the bill be taken up. Uh, but the end result, it wasn't, so it died. And, uh, I think the only, um, thing that makes me feel a little bit better about that is that there's probably hundreds of other industry groups like IDDA that can say exactly the same thing about the session. The bill's in good shape. It were poised to go and we just ran out of time.
In light of that, and with your information that it looked like had they had time and we didn't have COVID, would you expect in this next session, that will come back up and that will pass?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my hope and certainly we'll be back, I mean, we'll have legislative priorities established at our annual conference and I expect that we'll be back with it and we'll, you know, unfortunately, it was the end of the session, so everything dies. We're not in a hurry over here, so everything has to start over with a new legislature.
But you're not changing anything as far as you're requesting and that, it's the same, so it's just re-initiating the process.
So that'll certainly be on the, um, on the docket for next year. And, um.
What is the current threshold?
I'll look at this.
Fifty thousand, yeah.
John, maybe we can talk a little bit about the WMAs.
Okay.
Cause we are, we got involved in one up here in the northeast part of the county, the Prairie Creek Watershed. And they asked us to join it to help them to get their grant funding and, you know, things like that.
WMAs are Watershed Management Authorities. This has been legislation that's been around for about ten years now. And, um, first thing I want to point out is some supervisors don't really understand is that when you hear the term Watershed Management Authority, you make the assumption that they have authority. And they don't. They don't have the authority to enforce anything. What they can do, join together, improve group, twenty-eighty agreement. They can study. They can assess. They can recommend. They can put together plans relating to the watershed that they're working in in terms of how they control inputs into that watershed, potentially control pollution into that watershed. They put plans together, they make recommendations. But they can't, none of that has the force of regulation or none of that has the force of law. So a Watershed Management Authority cannot tell you as a county supervisor or cannot tell you as a drainage district trustee, uh, what you have to do for your drainage. So that's the first thing that's important to understand. I've heard some concerns expressed, uh, from membership about, that have attended WMA, WMA meetings that, you know, a lot of the discussions taking place is, um, from groups and individuals who don't have any knowledge of drainage and don't have any knowledge of drainage rights and are talking about things that really are, are very, um, very opposite of protecting drainage rights and protecting landlord's rights under drainage. And that's a concern and it should be, should well be a concern. So the main thing we've done in the past as an association is when I've had county supervisors call me and say, you know, we've been asked to participate, say by all means participate. Because we need those voices at the table, um, when drainage is discussed. You know, there was, there was an issue up in, um, some counties, um, north and west of here with the Watershed Management Authority where there was a plan being pushed through that some of the county supervisor executives trustees didn't like. And they ended up getting outvoted, which was, you know, unfortunately, just the way it came down in this place, in this, in this particular issue. You know, I, I, I think Watershed Management Authorities really, um, are concerning to me. They do, do need to be watched and at least from my perspective, if, if, you know, we start to see legislation that moves to give them actual authority over what you all do and what you all do to protect drainage rights and landlord's rights that you represent, we, we would work against that. You know, other than that, if there's some legislative funding to me or some other things that could be done to improve the situation with them, we're certainly willing to look at that. We've been working very closely with Fronter on this issue. We haven't come to the conclusion yet on if we're gonna be moving forth with something in the next legislative year, but it's still actively under discussion. Last thing I talk about is a, um, a grant that IDDA has become part of. We were approached, um, by a group that is an offshoot of the Iowa Soil Bee Association. Which, uh, was, um, applying for a federal grant other, under NRCS. And it's, it's called RCP, which is a Regional Conservation Program Grant. And the purpose of the grant is to, um, advocate for and talk about what is called conservation drainage. And conservation drainage, um, I guess the best way to explain that is that it, it looks at drainage and, and takes it to a different level and says, you know, instead of just draining the water when it hits the land, is there ways that we can store that water? Is there ways that water is being slowed down or held? Because, you know, we're getting a lot of rain now. The water needs to come off the land, but what about later? What about August? When we're not getting that rain and we need that water. Is there a way that we can, you know, store that in the side pond? Is there a way we can store that in, in the soil profile? So that we're just, so that we're not looking at like, we just need to get rid of, rid of water. It's looking at it from a different perspective and say, maybe there are ways we could hold that and use that water later on. And of course, there are companies that, that, um, make water control structures that do that kind of thing. Right now, when there is a drainage improvement being contemplated, and I'm generalizing here, but what happens for the most part in that improvement is that you have a larger version of what you had before put in there. You're upsizing the mains. So that you improve your coefficient of drainage. Conservation drainage takes that to the next level and says, you know, while we're doing that, while we're redesigning that structure, is there conservation practices we could build into that as we're going along? To make drainage a more environmentally sound practice? Are there places on the landscape that we could incorporate wetlands? Are there places we could incorporate buffers, could be put saturated buffers in? Is there a place where it makes sense to put a bioreactor? And as long as we're doing that, let's, let's build that into the plans for the improvement. Two things have to happen for that to happen. And one, you all would have to direct that, is the trustees that are running the improvement. Secondly, of course, the engineers who are designing that would have to engineer those projects in. And in most cases, under this program, the cost of those structures that is going, that are going in would be paid for under federal grants. So it is, at least potentially, that's, that's not an automatic, but potentially it could be no cost at all to the district or to the landlords in the district for, for those conservation practices being included. My view is that's the future of drainage. You know, I, I think that's where we're heading. So IDDA is a part of that. We're, there's like thirty groups involved. So IDDA is a part of that, where there's like 30 groups involved, and we're certainly a small part of it. But our role is to talk about the process with you all, which is why I bring it up today, so that you're aware of it, and then as we get going down the road, we're going to see if we can find some improvements where we can actually put this, put this into place and make it, make it a reality.
John, is that grant money available today? If that would, if you would get to an applicable project?
Not today, but soon.
Okay.
The grant is not, the grant has been granted, but it hasn't been finalized yet. We're still in the, in the paperwork stage, contracts and all that kind of good stuff. But I had a conversation Friday morning with a gentleman at the Soybean Association, who's the head honcho for the grant, and he expects that we'll see the paperwork finalized at this point.
Okay. So that would be something that we look into as soon as, like, next year's project?
Yes, yes.
Awesome. Yeah, I think you're correct in saying that the conservation part of water is going to be implemented into drainage districts, as well as all the rest of the drainage involved.
I think it'd be an awesome way to do it, but for us, you know, you take a project that just say costs a million dollars, then they're going to put a conservation add-on on that. What percentage would that add to the project? And how do we fund that added?
That's what I say, if the grant's available, it's going to be a lot easier. We're applicable, not every project's going to be worth for that.
Yeah, I think that's right.
But you have to have the landlords who are going to look at you like, you're going to add something to what is already expensive?
Right.
We'd have to make, we'd have to make really, almost 100% sure that that was going to be a, a solution.
Well, and if it's going to be paid for, essentially, most of it paid for, it's going to be a lot easier for that, you know, thought process of incorporating it, because if, if it's not mandated, if it's not by law that you have to, and if landlords are paying for it, you know what they're going to say.
Right.
We're not going to add expense to this project.
We've already got enough.
Right. But that's why I say, if the grant money's available...
Certainly, like any other improvement, it would be subject to remuneration.
But if the grant money's available, and it's laid out and spelled out, you know, that this would be...
I think it's a, I'm glad that they're...
The thing to jail is not above the civil law.
What I've indicated to the grant people, and this is what we hope happens, that if you have an improvement and you build these practices in, and say, these practices are going to add $150,000 to the cost of the improvement, I think the easiest way for that to happen would be if that $150,000 goes to you all, as the trustee for the project to offset that cost. I think that's the cleanest way to do it, but I don't know if we're going to be able to get that done or not. It's all going to be worked out.
Certainly no more by next year.
Yes, yes.
That's good stuff.
Thanks, John.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for showing up in person, and I imagine this is, you're making the rounds.
I am. We have one county that was very reluctant to hold in-person meetings, and I've been trying to get up to see them in Dickinson County, but they have, they have done a partial visiting, I'm going to be visiting with Dickinson County tomorrow.
Good luck, yeah. Thanks for all you do, thanks to the drainage association.
We have a new county from Clear Island Southeast, Iowa, join us? Or was that last year?
Last year.
That was last year, yeah.
So, back to our meeting in Fort Dodge, would, I know we have counties that come from Clearup Northeast, would they be able to at least call in and listen to it, or, I mean, how are we, instead of driving down for a half hour to an hour, that's a waste?
We don't expect that many, as many people will do that, and again, we don't have the legislative ability, but legal ability to do it, which we can't do it.
They couldn't even just call to listen?
I...
I mean, they don't have to be actively participating?
They could probably listen in, but they couldn't vote.
Right, they have to be there in person.
Well, I would think that you, we would at least have the ability to, spend the time to drive down for a half hour, an hour meeting.
Yeah, we're anticipating our attendance is good, I understand that, we're anticipating our attendance to be much worse.
Question on the voting part of it and the meeting protocol, does this go by county? So does each county that's a member have one vote?
No. It's not one vote. So each member county, you vote according to the number of districts in your county. So if you have 500 districts, you have 500 votes. Association Y, we have, oh, you're going to push me now. I've got the numbers at home.
Yep.
But we have, you know, drainage districts in the state.
I remember seeing that number too, it was in the thousands.
It's got to be a lot.
Something like 3,000 or something like that.
Yeah, 3,600, 3,700. So we'll, we'll go from there, and I, you know, certainly I'll have that all, all broken out. So what happens is, for a quorum, you have to have one-third of your votes present. And then the actual voting, you have to have one-half. That's all by state law. So if we've got 3,600 votes, we need to have 1,100 present to have a quorum at the meeting. And then when we actually vote on the legislation and vote on the officers, et cetera, we have to have half the number.
Are you worried about having some quorum?
Well, I don't believe so, Sandy, because, like Humble, how many votes do we have? We got 128 districts, we don't have 29 districts?
Well, I know from looking at it, that if we had every member of the board of directors present, which I assume we will, we'll have, we'll have a quorum right off the bat.
Okay. So does it, you know, there's, we have in our county five supervisors, so is it broke up by supervisor districts, or is it just...
How you all do that internally, and how you all decide to capture those internals is up to you.
I don't think that's ever been discussed.
Not really.
As far as drainage district?
Right.
You know, the, all the procedural stuff you get, you have to go through for the meeting, but...
Because usually, we're all there.
Right. But if not, it probably kind of counted if one person showed up, that's Humble County.
Correct, yeah.
I think it's representative of, whether it's all or one.
Right. I think we did have one case, probably 12, 13 years ago, where we had a building seat that was contested, and we actually had to go the way to building system, but that's the only one time I can remember in 19 years, so.
Okay. Well, good luck with getting the rest of the meeting put together and the rest of your rounds.
Yeah. It's an interesting time, as we all know.
Overlaid. All right, thanks again, John.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, we are in drainage. We have DD 7 sub 2, accepting preliminary engineering report, setting your date.
I think you're hitting there.
Yep. All right, there he is.
And I'm Colin Klingbile, I don't think I've met any of you yet.
You don't look real familiar, Colin.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And Sandy, if you're on the line, sorry, I don't have a copy for you, I guess. But I'll try to be descriptive. Yeah, just to kind of introduce myself a little bit more, I work with Bolton &amp; Mank, an engineering firm, and I'm out of the center office. And there's a petition for this drainage district 7 sub 2, and it, I think it had requested Don, Don Etler, and he's somebody that I work with, had been in drainage for 40 years, and he actually retired this past June. And so, basically, I took the lead on this project. Yeah, a little bit more about myself, I grew up on a farm by Estreville, and went to Iowa State, got a degree in ag engineering, and graduated from there in 2012, and so, you know, been doing this drainage stuff.
You started out with Bolton &amp; Mank then?
I did, um, I did a year for a company called Validif, for doing nutrient management plans, and then I worked for the DNR for five years, in water quality related stuff. And then I've been with Bolton &amp; Mank for the last two years. Yep, this is drainage stuff when I was in college, is the stuff that I wanted to be doing, so I'm, I'm glad to be in it now. But moving on, so we've got this engineer's report here, and then I just wanted, before we go into the report at all, this, this map kind of helped to describe the situation here. So the, the red lines on the map show the existing district facilities for drainage district 7 sub 2. One, and this was built 110 years ago, so 1910, the vast majority of it. But if you see, towards the ditch, there's a relief main and original main, there's two red lines there. So in 1993, a petition came in, and essentially, that main was not providing adequate drainage, so a relief main was put in up to that green dot on the map, basically paralleling the original main tile. And one unique thing, and we don't normally do this now, because the tile that was put in is so old, and you don't want to rely on that for another 100 years or so, but the tile wasn't connected together. So the, the relief main, basically, they saved some money, because they could make it smaller, but basically, the lands from the north drain into that relief main, and from the south they go into the original. And together, that gives like a half inch drainage coefficient, so it was like a quarter inch, so that's, and the lands in the district taking off that amount of water over the whole district per day. And 100 years ago, they used smaller drainage coefficients, farming practices are different. Now, for quite a while, a half inch drainage coefficient or more has been the standard. And that's what the lower end of this is, together with the relief main and the original main tile. From that green dot to the east, and then you see this orange boundary that's drawn, it's a watershed that's served by that tile, that, there's no relief main there, so it's just the original main tile, so it's still at that quarter inch drainage coefficient. And that's where the petition came from, David Huntermark, I believe, and basically to upsize that, that tile. And one interesting thing, and the petition pointed out, to hook into the relief main, well, that kind of makes sense, because it's a newer, it's a newer tile, but as I found when I was doing research into it, if we hooked into that relief main, it's going to screw up the...
It's going to overload it.
It's going to overload it. And so those, that land in, in the orange is meant to drain into the old main tile. So that's not something I'm crazy about, because if we put a new tile in...
A 110-year-old tile?
We have to hook it into that, that old tile. And from talking with David, I mean, he had tied some, he had done some tiling into that main tile, and said it's in pretty good condition. And, and short of, well, essentially, you either don't do the project, or if you're concerned about that original main, you have to go back down again and put another tile in, or either replace the whole system, or put another tile in, so you can get it to the outlet without overloading anything.
What's the, what's the size on the original main and the relief main?
The original, um, just a second, I have some of that material. I believe they were like 20... I think they were both 20-inch. So they put in, relief main starts out as 24-inch and ends up as a 20-inch, where it ends, and there's a junction box there. The original, um, that might have started out as a 24-inch as well. And it ends, basically at that same spot, it's an 18-inch. And that's what, so I did a preliminary design, and basically, we would hook an 18-inch tile, new tile, reinforced concrete pipe, into that old 18-inch. And so then that would up, and it can carry it, I mean, it's, from downstream, it's designed for a half inch for the lands that it drains, and so we would just be up sizing, and it's the black line on your...
That would be the new line.
That would be the new line. And there actually is, it's the original main kind of hooks to the south a little bit, and then Branch 5 goes up the east side of Hawaii Avenue. One, actually, Branch 5 is a little bit higher drainage coefficient, but there's, it's kind of right underneath the road.
I see that.
And it's difficult to get access to, to hook anything in, or to do maintenance. And it still is undersized a little bit, so, and basically, what we'd be doing is putting in an 18-inch up until where we cross the original main, and then going from a 15-inch across the road, and then up to the north. And there'd be a couple of intakes in the road ditch too, is what we're looking for coming.
So would you abandon the tile that's running down the road?
Yeah. I, we would, we would leave that, we could abandon it, we would, I would plan on leaving it functioning right now. If you'd rather have us do something with it, we could.
Well, in my opinion, it would be to get rid of it, but that's because...
Would you, would you like us to try to...
Build it either in the road ditch, or if it's running down the roadway?
Yeah.
And buy it...
Don't want voids in there. It's like a 10 to 12-inch pipe in there. But we could, rather than, rather than digging up the road, I suppose we could try to fill out the ground or something, if that's okay.
Well, you'd have to make sure nothing else is...
Yeah, I was just saying, you don't want anything on the other side of the road.
Didn't we do a permit for gent's to cross the road in the same location?
It was supposed to be a private tile, and when it was approved by my dad, my dad is George Jensen, and he's the one that's got the biggest area here, over the landmark. And when it was approved by dad, after where the tile was going to go, then David came, took it to the county supervisors, and wanted it to go into the drainage district, rather than be private. And it is a 10-inch tile that goes down the road, but can't we clean out the tile? I mean, is there any way we can clean that out? Because we don't have any drainage issues, and this is going to cost a fortune for us. We've got any issues?
Yeah, I think I seen it's like 300 and some bucks an acre, average.
Oh, I think it'll be, it'll be more, it would be more than that, the average. But I've got...
Average cost per acre, 331 for the main, Branch 5, 457.
That was, yeah, that's the construction, and so then, there's some lands that are served by both of those, so when you get to, and this is a discussion to have here, I mean, it's like 160 acres we're talking about, of land that would benefit. I've got, and I do want to talk about, so I had a cost estimate here for the project of $159,000, so that's like a thousand dollars an acre average. There's, when I, when we do estimates, we like to keep them on the higher side, and almost always bids come in better than, but we want landlords to know what they could be getting into before, you know, they decide to go ahead with the project. And, and we have to estimate our, our engineering fees and stuff, and in smaller projects like this, it is harder to... And in smaller projects like this, it is harder to be efficient because it's repeat stuff where bigger projects have a smaller portion of the total cost. But yes, I mean, if it turns out to be a hundred and sixty thousand for a hundred and sixty acres, a thousand dollars an acre, that's quite expensive for a drainage project. And I'm sure you're aware.
Yeah.
So that is, that is a concern. And I did, we could talk a little bit. I've got a recommendation of using concrete, reinforced concrete pipe. And there is some thought that, okay, could, could plastic pipe be used? And would that be more economically efficient? I wouldn't recommend that for a drainage district main. And there's the dual wall pipe. Anytime that we've seen that it's been installed, like it's supposed to be smooth on the inner liner. But, when it's installed, some of those corrugations end up showing up and then it doesn't perform as designed. And then with plastic, if you want it to last a hundred years, it's always going to start deflecting. And by the manufacturer's recommendations, basically, you're supposed to encase that whole thing in crushed rock.
Right.
And by the time you do all of those things-
Might as well put-
Yeah, you might as well put reinforced concrete pipe in. We can though, if this project ends up moving forward, we can bid both ways and see what comes in cheaper. If that's, if that's something that's desirable. I mean, that's, that's down the line always, but, so yeah. I've got reinforced concrete pipe recommended in here. A couple of other things, I guess, to mention. So, the land benefited here, like, and what I'm asking for today is tentative approval of the engineer's report and then scheduling a hearing to have with, with landowners in the district. Like, yes, this, what we're talking about would only benefit about a hundred and sixty acres. But by drainage code, whatever the existing district is, is the ones that have, have to be sent notice and be able to participate in the hearing. Now that doesn't exactly make a hundred percent of sense here because all these lands to the west, they really shouldn't care because they're not going to benefit. And they're, they shouldn't pay for it either. But we do need reclassification to get those dollars correct. And that's something with, with Trish, she sent me the existing schedule. And all of this district is on a single maintenance schedule. So if you, if there was maintenance on Branch Four in the northeast corner, then everybody's going to help pay for it. Or, or on any of these other laterals, basically, everybody's going to help pay for that, regardless of whether their land is drained by it or not. So I guess that's another thing to keep in mind is we'd want to reclassify to pay for the project. But then the district, even if the project doesn't move forward, we would recommend that it be reclassified so it's, it's split up to be more fair with future maintenance.
Just, just looking at this yellow outline for the board or here you're going outside of the district right now? It looks like a little-
That little chunk on the south end, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't think we would, essentially, I threw that watershed to make sure the design of the tile would be adequate. But like a small little itty bitty piece like that isn't worth messing with as far as annexation. But, as we would look at reclassification, and I didn't do a detailed look at that at this point in time. But if we found that there are lands out, and that purple boundary is the existing parcel, the parcels that are in the district right now. If we found significant lands outside of those, we could bring that to your attention and see if annexation is something that would make sense. I'll just kind of flip through the engineer's reports here a little bit, see if there was anything else. And the whole district is seven hundred and twenty-two acres right now, the Sub Two. And I did, I attached a card, my contact information. So if you're reading through the report or have any questions, then I'm going to leave a bunch of copies here for landowners to pick up and, and read. So if anybody has any questions, they can get ahold of me. That, I think that about covers what I wanted to, what I wanted to discuss. Is there any other questions from you all?
I'm curious, what's the, how, is this a deep?
It's not very deep, no. And on the very last page, there's a, there's a plan sheet. And it's got the plan and profile. And this is a preliminary plan. But it's not, it's not super deep compared to a lot of projects. And, and one of the reasons it's not is because we're going to have to dig up that old tile and hook directly onto that. And then we want to try to be underneath it, so we have to go a little bit flatter. And it's already pretty flat, like it's nine, point oh nine percent grade. And so, I'm going to go a little bit flatter than that to try to keep just a little bit lower, just to make sure that any tile that we would encounter could flow down into the new tile. We want to be lower than that old tile if we can.
The original main doesn't hook into that junction box. It looks like it does on your map, but it doesn't.
It does not.
Okay. Some of these projects in the past, we've been doing a reclassification. We call it pre-class, basically.
Okay, yeah.
Do that first so people know exactly what they're going to have to pay, rather than just assuming. And it sounds like this district needs to be done anyway to get things divided out. I wonder if that's right, we should do that first.
You, you bring up a good point. I did discuss that a little bit in the report. When I was writing the report, I thought this is such a small project, if it doesn't go-
It's going to cost ten bucks an acre probably to do it.
Yeah. If it doesn't go, then that would be a futile effort. But you're right, after biting more out-
They cost to where they should, like the repairs should be separated out for future repairs. So you have something good done anyway.
Yep, and, yeah, my perspective is a little bit different on that because of that, where that's not necessarily wasted money. But it does, it would take time to go and, and do that. And then before we could come back and then have a hearing. And it would be, depend on how we wanted to do that. If we wanted to just say, okay, we're going to do the reclassification and then come back and, and talk to you before we do a hearing, before we even schedule a hearing, that would be more of a delay. Or we could plan on doing the pre-class and then presenting it at, at the hearing. And I, I think my hope was, I guess, is if this project was to move forward, that it could be constructed. I mean, it's not, it's a half mile of tile and one road crossing. That it could be in the ground before planting next, next spring or about June would be the goal. But, it wouldn't have to be. I, I understand that perspective. We do that a lot, the pre-classification for projects. Because if I'm a landlord too, I want to know, I want to have a good idea of what it's going to cost me. So that's something we can do if you, if you think that's a good idea.
I'm just a little confused here with this existing assessment boundaries. I have never seen one so square in my life.
It's not.
Yeah.
What is it, just an estimate?
It's the parcels, it's, it's the parcel boundary.
This is the parcel boundary. So everything inside this is somewhat parcel.
Yeah, the ones on the boundaries, like the actual assessment schedule will show the actual acres within that parcel that are-
It is actually, isn't it, the actual outline?
No, it's not the watershed drainage area.
The actual I was hoping for is the actual watershed.
Yeah, I, I did draw that. But there is, yeah, the plat- Right. There's an old plat that shows that.
That outer boundary here.
Okay. Is that, would you consider that is the drainage district then?
Uh, I would, that was the nineteen ninety-three plat. What is the drainage district is what's in the, in the assessment schedule. And that's in the report too. But that's what's on file here with the county. And it's, it shows every parcel that's in and the legal description, the number of acres and the unit assessed.
Whole boundary around.
So that's the, that's what the existing district is. And that's how I generated that, that outer boundary. It was just what parcels are included in the district right now. Yep.
Not the whole parcel, just portions of it.
Right. And if we did a reclassification, we'd look at what the actual acres are, not just whole parcels on our fringes.
The original tile was fourteen inches and then it goes down to twelve and then it goes down to ten. It's the north line that doesn't work. And Huntermark, when he was at my house and we were discussing where he was going to tie it, he had gone and taken pictures of going into the drainage open ditch. And there's, it was during a four inch rain and none of the tiles were running full. Not even close, not even half. And so he was saying if he added the private tile, it wouldn't overdo the drainage district. Wouldn't have any issues. So, my thing is, let's clean it out. Let's not, I mean, his north line. And I know that it's through the road, which makes it a lot harder, but-
I'm not, I'm not really sure where this runs with respect to the roadway.
When these guys, when these guys were there, there was a pink circle painted in the middle of our gravel road with an X. I was sure that that's where you guys found it or-
No, that actually was like a section corner or a, a land append in the road.
Okay, because it was located further north than the-
Than the, than the field?
Yeah.
All right.
Ben, are we having any issues with blowouts and stuff in the ditches or in the past?
We have a report to it. I know we permitted this crossing at one point as a private tile crossing with Gary Jensen and David Huntermark. Uh, we did that last fall or this spring?
Last fall or spring.
And Gary had talked about hooking into the junction box out in, in your field and, and coming across with a private tile perpendicular crossing the road and for, for David to hook into.
And we were good with that because it was a private tile and it wasn't costing us a fortune like this is going to cost us.
Well, it's still a-
Exactly, exactly.
Possibility that this can be accomplished privately versus drainage district wise?
We, I have a signed agreement that Dad wrote, I mean, I wrote, that Dad signed it, said that he gave them permission. Gary and Tom and David and my husband and I met at my house and I typed up a thing saying that they had permission to do just what they were going to do.
That's right.
And then send it to David and Tom and Gary to make sure that it was worded like everybody thought it would, should be, and signed by my dad. And then David said, no, I decided I was going to go through the drainage district. So then came to you guys and then had, you know, requested that you guys do it. I think Trish has got a copy of that letter.
And I, I would just say, if it, if it does, if something does end up being done privately, don't hook it into the, that junction box, like stuff across the road. That's going to unbalance the lines.
This is the letter that Dad signed on July tenth that we met and approved. I don't know if anybody wants a copy of it, but I can get you a copy if you'd like.
If it goes through as private, I would need it as an upstream property owner.
Are you opposed to reclassifying the district? Spending that ten bucks an acre to get it figured out who pays for what?
No, because it helps-
Just so you know, Dave.
Yeah.
It helps everybody know. Because when I was talking, I talked to Ed Dyvick and Bolden about it and they might not have to pay for any of this because their land is not in the gold or the yellow. And they would appreciate knowing that.
If we did a reclassification, I'd expect that they would help pay for that because it would be for the whole-
Right.
The whole district.
And we, we, I talked a little bit with Julie too about, so her dad's land is, what did I say? It's about forty acres here. It's north of the, that black line and then up through this, this corner here. And, so that's on the lower end of the tile. And it's, like she said, I mean, not as much drainage problem as you can even see on this map where the wet areas are. And that's something that's all like in reclassification is based on relative benefit for, for the project. If you're on the lower end, you don't use the whole tile system. So you'll only be paying, helping pay for the lower end. And then the wetter, like we look at soil types and drainage needs. And that's part of the relative benefit to lands that are wetter and have a greater need for drainage in order to be productive. Farmland benefit more from these sources of energy. So that, that's all stuff that would be considered in the, in the reclassification.
All right. Well, I'm going to make a motion to accept the preliminary engineering report. Uh, attach that motion. I will request that we do a pre-classification. And then, once we get that reclassification, then we'll look at setting a hearing date. So, you know, it's, who pays for what?
What about, well, the, you said something about, really, you're talking pre-classification. He's talking that it needs to be sectioned off more than it is just the one giant-
Yes, it's the reclassification.
Would that, is that in that motion then?
Yes, that's what the reclassification will show, right?
So we can do a couple of things. And there's, there will be a, let's just fast forward and assume this project goes. What we would do is we would have a one-time schedule to help pay for the construction of this project. And that would only go towards that area in orange. And so, basically, for the construction, it would be used once to levy the cost and then it would be set aside. Then there would be other schedules for the whole district that would be maintenance, future maintenance schedules. So in the future, as maintenance items come up, and then you need to levy, that's, that's how you would levy those costs is based on those maintenance schedules. So if we're doing a pre-classification, we could either just do the hundred and sixty acres, that one-time schedule, or we could do the whole district. But, and if this, it'd be quicker just to do the one time so the people that could pay for this project would know. But, like you said, it's not going to necessarily be wasted effort if you're planning on doing reclassification anyways for the, for the maintenance.
Because when was the last time this was done? Probably a long, long time ago.
Well, there's a little bit of cloudiness on that. So that, there's the, and I was working with Trish on this. There's another schedule for the relief main, but we believe that that was intended to be a one-time use schedule to pay for, because the dollar matched exactly what it said in the schedule to pay for the project. So we believe that that was produced in order to pay for the relief main and then to be set aside. And so, the only schedule is- And so the only schedule is what's there now. I don't know when that was done.
It was nineteen ninety.
That was when relief was put in.
That's when the relief was put in.
And then they, they put, this is the land values and then they reclassified it and...
Okay. Well, I was looking at some of that stuff and it didn't match what the existing schedule says. So there's still a little bit of murkiness on when exactly that was done, but it's all on one schedule. And that's not equitable. It, it's better to split off some of these branches so that if there's maintenance that's done, the people who's, who are benefiting are the ones that pay the maintenance costs and not the whole.
Break it out into different branches is what I-
And that's what you're driving at, but I'm curious, 'cause it keeps coming back to the area in orange for those improvement benefited lands. You're saying that essentially those, just that area is paying for this and it's not?
Yeah.
It's not its own s- area right now?
A traditional pre-classification, I, we would just do the classification of that area in orange. That would be most pertinent to what we're proposing. We can do the reclassification of the, the rest of it later.
But it doesn't, I'm, I'm not following all the re-class, pre-class and that because this whole district, which is, uh, seven sub-two, you know, is laid out right now. It's, it's just one big, well, it's not big, but it's one district.
Yeah.
Southern sub-two. These other landlords and the other parts that we're talking about, they're not paying for this as it sets right now?
They would be right now.
They would be right now. They would be right now.
That's correct. Everybody in the-
That's what I'm driving at, yeah. Okay. So, but it gets circled and you're, you're like, you already said that they're the only ones that are gonna pay for it and we haven't even done that, so to me, it would be the whole district is paying for this improvement. Right now.
Right now.
The way it's set up right now.
That's correct.
So your numbers here, that's, that's the average across the district then?
No, I, on the acres benefited, I averaged that for just that hundred and sixty acres. Presuming that we would do a re-classification to pay for this project because, I mean, the people outside should not have to pay for it. And that decision would be at the hearing.
These numbers, or?
Well, those, that's the dollars per acre for the construction costs for each of those. Basically, part of it's the main and part of it's branch five that goes up the road.
Mm-hmm. So that is just this area? So you've already kind of jumped to the conclusion that this is gonna get, gonna get-
The land that's under the oil ones that should pay.
Yeah. So you didn't, this is not, these numbers aren't the entire district as it's set up right now. So we kind of, we kind of jumped ahead to, so you kind of already know without doing anything.
Well, that's the, just the average.
Right.
It's not gonna be, it wouldn't be that way, 'cause it's based on relative benefits.
Right. It's not that you're-
Right.
Pre-classification, re-classification thing, but still, it gives you a rough idea kind of what these folks would be looking at, even if you do redo the whole district and get it more fair, like you were saying.
You said it'd be about a thousand dollars an acre.
Yeah. Well, if you have these up, it's not too far off, so.
Rick has a motion to accept the preliminary report and to do the re-class.
Classification, yeah.
Are you still good with that, or are you?
And what was the following part you said? Follow, and following the re-class?
Following, we get the re-classification, then we'll set a hearing.
Set a hearing?
Once we get the re-classification, 'cause I think, you're going through the, I know what you're saying, you want to push this through faster. Basically, you don't want to, 'cause that's gonna take time to re-class these other branches.
Yeah.
Um, but it's something that needs to be done anyway and you're in the process of doing it. I just thought it'd be a good time to get it done.
Yeah, I agree with that, 'cause you, for your research, yeah, it, it's just one big chunk. Try to get it more fair for really future maintenance more than any, as much as anything. Plus kind of figuring this out. So that does make sense. That much would be positive. And then it, you go from there to get back to the project, I guess. Was that?
The quickest thing, and, I mean, you guys have the decision. If, if time is a concern, I mean, we can just do the pre-classification of the, the land benefited by this project so that people have a good idea of what they would pay for the construction of these proposed lines for the hearing. That other stuff for the hearing isn't really gonna be as relevant. It's gonna actually have to, would have to be a separate hearing to, to prove that. Um, it, so as far as efficiency, we could just do that part in orange to start and then knowing that we're gonna move on with the rest of it regardless of whether the project proceeds.
That makes-
That's what we need the information for.
Well, that's what I say, 'cause yeah, you, you keep looking at this proposed, I think I would agree-
All right, I will amend my motion to drop the other request of the rest of the district, just do the part that's in this orange. And I wanna see that before we move ahead in the hearing.
Yep. That makes good sense.
Is that, are you good with that?
Yeah.
I guess I'll second that.
Are you good with that?
Well, I, I wanted to make sure before we're already-
Yep. No, we don't want to re-amend the amended motion, but, so, we've got that, you got that? Any further discussion?
Are you any concerned with this project, Ben?
No.
I'd like to see it as a private tile, I mean, it only costs me fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Well, we, we, we gotta have, as Rick said, get that, then the hearing date, that's in the motion, so we haven't come to that conclusion yet. So, any further discussion?
Hopefully we can head that direction.
Yep, we are.
I mean, towards Ben's idea.
Yep. All those in favor?
This is the wet line. Makes sense to a private.
Well, this is just to get. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? There you go.
I don't, I don't before we do anything.
Yep. So just, uh, rough kind of frame?
Um, well, if we're doing that, it's like the possible construction that's falling basically out.
Yeah, but I mean, this, you know, to get your pre-classification-
I'd say probably a month would be-
Take that long?
And, and I don't know what your thoughts are, I even have fully a hearing during harvest season anyway. Is that something you don't really try to-
Well, if you're, if you're saying a month, harvest is gonna be, as you well know.
Yeah.
But, so we, we could still have the hearing after you get the information.
But we'll, we'll get on it right away.
I would say, yeah, because-
And it's a small, relatively small area, it shouldn't be a complicated-
I think by the time you get your information compiled, and that's the free classification, correct? That, uh, then I think it's fair to have the hearing set.
Yep, yep, no, I agree.
Yeah, I don't want to interfere with anybody's schedule. So, but just to clarify, the free classification, it's gonna give them the correct dollar amount for this proposed, for this proposed project without sectioning off, you know, other areas in the district. It's not gonna make a difference.
For basically, for your forty, this is what I'm paying for.
Now, based on that a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars total project cost, we'll have that to shed over that area.
He just mentioned that, I said, go ahead, do it, you get, still have the hearing and information's available like the motion said. And, 'cause if he's talking about a month, there is no harvest left in the month. So, we'll get the hearing set. No. So, I think that's positive. Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Usually, usually a new engineer brings treats, but we don't wanna put them.
Sorry, Bob.
I'm crazy.
Next time, but yeah, we'd like, you talk about, no, you can't take them in, I'll take them. Yeah.
I thought this guy's really wanting to come in and make a name for himself.
Are you, okay, with that direction? I think it's better to get that information to do before we do anything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie. Thanks, Colin.
Did you get all these papers, Julie? Thank you.
Is there anything else drainage related, means we are in drainage?
Hmm, no, I think I'm good. Are you?
Anything drainage wise? Okay.
I was shocked to find water in the ditch, 'cause it was dry.
Ah-ha!
And then I went up to the, I was out walking my dogs. I went up to the next road and there's two feet of water in it.
Wait a minute.
Yeah. Muskrat or beaver something. I said, dam it up, 'cause the, the one road is blowing dry and you go upstream and there's two feet of water and ducks and all kinds of stuff swimming around in it.
Did you get a location on that?
Yes, I did.
Hey, Colin.
I'm gonna have something, go out, take a look at it.
Okay. You got a beaver trap?
My guess is muskrats. 'Cause there's no trees around at all.
Guess again. Muskrats don't build dams like that.
It's gotta turn all the water back up.
I'll leave that to you. I'll leave that to you if you're running to issue that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They got their own.
Yeah, they're, they're doing their own water now, ain't they? Good one.
They already got the paperwork signed and they're already in profit.
Yeah. Got a shock. I thought, man, all of a sudden here's a bunch of water. 'Cause everything else is pretty much bone dry out there.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion about the drainage, if you don't have any, Trish?
I'll say I got it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? We're out of drainage.
She's named Craig back there.
I don't think so.
No?
I think she's, unless she has something for us.
Ask if she has anything.
Yeah, if she don't have anything for us, we can- It's only gonna take nineteen years to pay for this project. I read that in there. From the benefit of this tile, it's gonna take an average of nineteen years to recoup your money.
Yeah, coming back, that's good.
I said it would frustrate you if you really didn't think you needed it.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I don't know. This, they, something with private tile, and I think it still probably should go the route of private. There's something we're not getting fully here that caused it to become a drainage district issue.
I think the price tag probably scared David.
Yeah.
Went into wanting to go drainage.
Share the cost.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
We're back here.
Yep.
Let's go this way. Do wait.
She said she could hear, I sent her a message and said, uh, can you, are you able to hear the audio? And she said, yeah. So, that's good.
The audio's been very well. Once in a while I could hear John, but it was, I could hear him and it just wasn't as clear.
Okay. Well, at least we-
And there was a question last week on the audio not being real well, but we have that mic, Eric has it in his desk. We're supposed to use that when people-
Oh.
Off the audience, yeah.
Well, from now on, we will.
I know people don't like using it.
Oh, no, they, they scare them.
But these speakers are good speakers and the mic is for those who are having trouble hearing.
Okay, is that just for the recording, or would that help Sandy?
Um, I think it's just for recording.
Okay, we'll, we'll use it from now on.
Yep.
'Cause I know on a couple of Youtubes I've tried to watch, you know, I can see you making hand gestures and then like ten seconds later you'll start talking.
See, Sandy says she can even hear you right now, he's just popping up by it.
That would just be in the wild, it's just bits of information we have.
Yep. I think it's spread about compression ratio, whatever it is.
You had asked us, we need to cancel the contract with Denise Johnson. Um, I got ahold of the county attorney, he made me a mock-up of a letter, so I put it on your letterhead. Um, and that will cancel at effective January one, 'cause you have to, he said it's too late to give it in for this month.
Oh, I was wondering about that, I'm at least, it has something to do with it.
I mean, I'm, sorry, December one.
December one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we pay rent for October, November yet, and then December one, so.
Whoops. Well, I'm not having the dog out here.
Then Eric, um-
I feel I have to sign that.
Yeah, you didn't sign it. I was gonna say, I, I suppose you would-
Where would you like me to sign it?
Um, no, each bill is separate, so you have to sign each bill.
I'll do, I'll sign the original.
You just want a initial, you can just initial it.
I'll just sign each one of these originals.
Yep.
And I have an, I have another one for you.
Oh, okay.
And I'll do the same.
Yep.
But can you, well, I'll sign it, but then I need a, I need a copy of this original.
Oh, sure.
Like, that's why I made these copy, I have a copy of these, so.
Okay.
I'll just sign each original one. Okay.
Wanted to remind you of the Des Moines River, um, meeting on tomorrow at nine thirty to eleven. If anybody was planning on doing that one, there's a Zoom meeting, send out on that. FEMA will be, um, consulting on the flood plain, flood hazard information. Um, we have some opioid updates, these are confidential, but I'll send them around, just two of them, and that's all I have.
Nothing else, I'll make a motion to the jury. Oh, you do have something?
Before we go out, I still get letters from Homeland Security. You've got twelve months remaining until full real ID enforcement deadline, and this is for everybody in the United States. Uh, get this on your license plates, or you will not be able to fly, you won't be able to, uh, go into federal buildings. And this includes districts that come along via Florida, Idaho, US Virgin Islands, and Guam, and all fifty states.
What is the real ID if I may, Dave?
I was gonna do a story on it.
Ninety-four-one. What, what?
They pushed it ahead a year from- With the COVID, they, we're supposed to have been done already.
I forwarded an email that I sent to, uh, Dan, 'cause I got that also. And, um, I asked her if she could get that, you know, we have a meeting going right now. And she would like to wait till later because of, uh, the most, uh, October, September, one. Because she's been doing everything by appointment, so, um, she's telling everybody, like, I know I've had my life, she tells everybody that we'd like to sort of do weed renewal debate about this and a lot of money that's gone off. But obviously she gets on, part of, you know, the, 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 like, um, individuals are starting to, you know, and, uh, but yeah, she would like to have, because listening to it, not in the last, because it ends this year, it's beginning of next year.
I'll hold on to my article.
Am I supposed to sign this one? Okay.
Now we do it?
Oh, can I say one quick thing, 'cause I'm just thinking a bit? Um, so, as far as our protocol for right-of-way weed control is, is done, for everything that we had planned. We have the north half, uh, all the secondary roads, that was the latest bill that I just have turned them in here. Uh, but it's not too late, if there's anything that's out there, particularly if you see something egregious in the southern half, um, all of the hard surface roads were covered, but, so hopefully you don't see any thistles mainly. But if you see something, there's still time and we'd be able to get that, you know, controlled yet this fall. But we're gonna need to know within the next, you know, couple of weeks or so to get that accomplished. But otherwise, uh, protocol program has been carried out for weed control in the right-of-ways, but if there is something out there, thistles in particular, please call, 'cause this is a good time to, we can still get those taken care of yet this year.
Perfect.
Something got missed. That's about it.
Out here on top of the hill, the corner, I don't really know, I see we mowed that all down.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're still mowing right now. Um, most of the guys are trying to hit their one last dime on gravels. Uh, I think we are trying to hit pavement one time before, when it was.
Must've got our mower fixed right this time. Still one there.
The one for the hump should, yeah. Uh, they had it up there all winter.
Okay, please copy, don't leave it here. Okay, that's your copy then?
Or a few more. They said that the, the frame holds it weak and putting more stress on one of the corners and that's why it's cracked. Yeah, not good, we haven't any problems with it. We have any problems with it this year.
Dr.?
No. Make a motion to a juror.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All...